Yeah, I will, but I've got a network from West. So you have to leave the. There's a DC hundred in the back. I'm not missing that one. I know, and it feels terrible.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of February two thousand and twenty-four to order. And if you would, please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance.
You might be a lot of guests.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Robert.
Eighteen hundreds now.
I do promise where that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Michigan, the charter and ordinances of the city of Cadillac, will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member according to.
I do.
All right, Sandy, if we could have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Allenbos.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Falcons.
Here.
This time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Allenbos.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk. That would be very much appreciated. And if you could keep your comments, three minutes or less.
Hello, my name is Jamie Stickles. I work with Relay for Life. And I have been put in charge of doing, planning and trying to execute Paint the Town Purple. And what that means is getting business owners to like paint their storefronts purple in support of Relay and put purple ribbons on like the light poles. And so I was thinking I probably, I came up with this wild and crazy idea. And I'm like, I probably should ask the city for permission to do it. And I was looking, I'm a Pinterest freak. I watch Pinterest and I look at Pinterest and I come up with all these ideas. And they have a tire, an actual tire, sitting on a tire stand with a Relay for Life flyer. And I was trying to figure out how to get maybe some of those painted and allow the city to allow me to put some of them in various places around town tactfully, like, and I'll show you a picture of what they look like. They won't look exactly like this because I am going to use wood for the base so the tire doesn't fall down. And then like I was thinking of maybe like around the city park, like by the train, down by the bathrooms and over in Cadillac West. And a lot of people think that Cadillac West isn't part of the city, but it really is. And the city starts at the cemetery abouts and comes all the way down to Walgreens. And so I was hoping that, you know, no more than twelve tires, but tactfully around like a bunch of them all in one spot, just like where people would notice and be like, what's that purple tire? And then there would be the sign. And I'll show you this, I'll come up and show you this. It's gonna look kind of like this. And I have people that have donated. Oh, thank you.
Just reach out to me.
Okay, yeah.
No, it's a purple tire.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, I felt that that was more of a asking the city permission type of situation instead of, you know, doing it and then asking for forgiveness. Because I'm.
There is a process.
Yeah.
Marcus just gave you his card.
Yeah.
He'll help you with that.
Yeah, and then I know I need to talk to the street person about the light poles and then maybe talk to the cemetery person about putting some ribbons on the cemetery, like on the gates, you know, like a tactful purple ribbon. And just like, so as you come into the town, like here's this whole town covered in purple. Like, why is, why is this town covered purple? Well, it would be in August and we're supporting Relay. And because Relay raises awareness for cancer.
Just reach out to me.
I will, thank you so much. So is that a go or no?
You just reach out to Marcus.
Just reach out to Marcus? Okay.
I'll guide you through.
We'll figure it all out.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting from January sixteenth.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, under communication, we have the presentation of our two thousand fiscal, excuse me, our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three audit.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to introduce Joe Verlin with Gaybridge to give the annual report. Joe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm going to go through the audit report. It's a hundred and ninety pages. I, I was going to cover all hundred and ninety pages, but Owen asked me to get to the point. So I'll keep it a little bit more summarized, but if there are questions along the way, feel free to ask. Before I actually get into the actual audit report itself, if you want to turn to page three of the audit, there is one thing that I did want to point out. Uh, this is the, it's an acknowledgement letter. So the city, in addition to doing the standard financial statement audit report, there's an introductory section, a statistical section, and it adds much comparative data for transparency to the residents of the city. And I wanted to point out, if you go to the very bottom of page three, it points out that this was the thirty-seventh year that the city has put together the full annual comprehensive financial report with the introductory and statistical section and submitted it to the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I took a look, there's ninety-eight local units of government in the state of Michigan that do this. And the city of Cadillac has the twelfth longest running streak of getting that award. I was curious how you guys ranked. So twelfth out of ninety-eight, which I thought was pretty impressive. And again, it just shows the city's commitment to being transparent with your residents. A lot of extra work goes into it, provides a lot of useful data, a lot of information, both in the front end and the back end of the report. And just wanted to point that out and give kudos to the city for doing that. In the state of Michigan, there are roughly fifty cities, so less than twenty percent of the cities in the state of Michigan put forth that effort. Now, if we go to page nine, we get into the actual audit report section. And in this hundred and ninety-page audit report, the second paragraph on page nine is what matters more than anything else. And this is where we provide the opinion on your financial statements. We wrote, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. This is a clean opinion on your financial statements. This is the gold standard. We can issue an opinion higher than this. The technical term is unmodified, but I would think of it as being a clean opinion on your financial statements. It means something to achieve it. In fact, today, I had to present an audit report with a disclaimed opinion because they couldn't stand behind the numbers that they provided to us. So certainly means something to achieve it, but at the same time, the city should always have the goal of having a clean opinion on your financial statements. What it means is that we were provided a set of financials. We were able to confirm and verify the numbers with the state of Michigan, various financial institutions, granting agencies. And the numbers were, they were accurate, they are verifiable, and accordingly, we provided a clean opinion on your financial statements. Next, if you go to page fourteen, we get into the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report. I would think of this as being the Cliff Notes version of your entire audit. So if you wanted to see ten pages or so of financial highlights, to your comparative information and some narrative explanation behind some of the more significant changes in your revenues and expenses during the past two years, this is the place to go look. And in the financial highlights section on page fourteen, that first bullet point shows that the expenses of the city exceeded the revenues by three hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and three dollars. In other words, you had a decrease in net position and the corporate world, we would call that a net loss for the year. But that compares to an increase in that position of about one point three six million dollars the previous year. So you had a very strong year in two thousand twenty-two, basically break even in two thousand twenty-three. And that's just kind of the way that, you know, municipal finance goes. There's ebbs and flows with regard to the changes in that position. The city had numerous street projects that consumed some of your expenses as well as an increase in your net OPEB and your net pension liabilities. City doesn't have any control over that, it's just based on market performance. So those were the primary reasons that we saw a total decrease in that position. But again, when you look at the past two years, basically, if we net the two together, about a million dollar increase in total net position over the past two years. Second bullet point down shows that when we look at the funds of the city, so that your fund balances the immediate resources that you have available as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. Your fund balances decreased by seven hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. But again, a lot of that has to do with all the street projects that were ongoing during the course of twenty-three. The general fund similarly had a two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollar decrease in fund balance. That also was because of a one point four million dollar transfer out to your major and local street funds for those, for funding of those road projects. Fourth bullet point down, if we look at the total unassigned fund balance of your general fund, the city had two million eight hundred and ninety-five thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars of unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is how much the city has to cover the day-to-day cost of running the city. You can use that for wages, utilities, supplies, things of that nature. When we divide that by your annual general fund expenditures and transfers out, you've got about thirty point seven percent. So about four months worth of reserves sitting in your unassigned fund balance. Very healthy, not too much, not too little, right where most of our cities end up, or right on track, right on par with our cities in the state of Michigan. And then the last bullet point shows that the total outstanding debt increased by seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars during the course of the year, and the biggest reason being the water and sewer project that was financed with the revenue bonds. Next, if you go to page twenty-seven, just a few things that I wanted to point out here. This is your statement of net position. This shows all of your assets and liabilities on the long-term basis of accounting. This is the accrual basis. So we've got net pension liability, net OPEB liability is all included on these financial statements. Very top row, three columns over, in the total column, you can see that city had about eleven point nine million dollars of cash and investments as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. It's about a one point one million dollar decrease. The biggest reason for that decrease is the city expended about six hundred thousand dollars of unexpended ARPA funds during fiscal twenty-three. About two-thirds of the way down, really, the one other thing that I did want to point out here is your net pension liability increased. If you went to last year's audit report, you would see it was about seven million dollars. And then it increased up to nine million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars. The biggest reason being that the MERS assets had a decrease because of market performance during calendar year two thousand twenty-two of ten point four percent. Again, the city doesn't have any control over that. Every local unit of government that uses MERS had a ten point four percent decrease in their pension assets just because of a down market during calendar twenty-two. That's the reason that your total net pension liability increased by two point two million dollars. And as a result of that, that, I mean, that's also why your net position decreased during the course of the year. So as that liability goes up, it increases your expenses. And accordingly, the city did see a one-time decrease in that position during the course of the year. Return one more page to page twenty-eight. This shows the revenues and expenses for the year. Just wanted to point out here, if you go to, it's the fifth column over, governmental activities, three rows up from the bottom, you can see the change in that position was a decrease, four hundred and forty thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars. And again, has to do entirely with road construction, pension and OPEB. The very next column over, you can see your business type activities, primarily your water and sewer fund had about a sixty-three, sixty-four thousand dollar increase in that position. If you go now to page thirty-one, we get a look at the revenues and expenditures for your fund, funds. And this is on the modified accrual basis of accounting, similar to cash basis accounting. So this shows how much revenue went in, how much cash went into the city and how much went out. And again, the general fund, the very first column there, two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollar decrease in fund balance, three rows up from the bottom. And then if you look at the major and local streets, you can see that they had transfers in of seven hundred and fifty thousand and nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars respectively to fund those road projects. That is the reason for the decrease in fund balance. And then if you go all the way to the very last column, total governmental funds, three rows up from the bottom, you can see the overall decrease in fund balances of seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars during the year. And just a couple more pages that I wanted to point out, if you go to page eighty-seven, we get into a ten-year comparative schedule showing the changes in the city's net pension liability. This is focusing just on the police and fire pension. And you can see that the police and fire pension has a June thirty year-end. And the very first column, June thirty, two thousand twenty-three, halfway down, the city had net investment income on the pension assets of nine hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That's because the twelve months ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-three, had a much better market return on the pension assets. If you look at the total liabilities for the MERS or the police and fire plan compared to the total assets, the city's seventy-eight point seven percent funded, much better than average. Most of our clients are right around seventy percent funded, so you guys are about eight, nine points better than average and about eighteen points better than what the Treasury expectation is for funding percentages of defined benefit pension plans. And then the last page that I wanted to point out is page ninety. This is the same schedule, but this is for your MERS pension plan. And we've got a slightly different timing of the valuation. This is as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and you can really see that the impact, obviously, the market performance from January first through June thirty, two thousand twenty-three was strong for the twelve months ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, halfway down the page, the net investment loss was a decrease of one point two seven million dollars. So instead of earning a seven percent rate of return, which is what the actuaries expect, the city actually lost ten point four percent, thus the overall increase in your net pension liability. Altogether, you can see that, three rows up from the bottom, the city was just under sixty-five percent funded, still five points better than what Treasury expects local units to beat in terms of the funding percentage. However, it was about thirteen percent less than where you guys were funded as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Totally out of your control. We do know that the pension assets had a strong return in two thousand twenty-three. Preliminary results that I heard last week, roughly a plus ten percent. So we should see a bit of a rebound next year when we look at your financial statements. So those are the highlights that I have. Certainly happy to take any further questions that the council might have.
Thank you.
Sure.
It's good to see you.
Yes, nice to be here.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Ellen. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Feel free to hit the road if you like, or you can hang out here.
Okay, the next thing on communication is the downtown sidewalk cafes.
It's being recommended to approve the request from Clam Torch R M P L LLC, doing business as Clam Lake Beer Company, Raven Barbecue LLC, doing business as Raven Social, Feaster Enterprises Inc., doing business as Roaring Twenty Saloon, Roasted Cafe LLC, and My Mezcal Mexican Grill LLC to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in two thousand twenty-four, meeting the two conditions noted.
Would someone like to make that motion or?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Clam Torch R M P L LLC, DBA Clam Lake Beer Company, Raven Barbecue LLC, DBA Raven Social, Feaster Enterprises Inc., DBA Roaring Twenty Saloon, Roasted Cafe LLC, and My Mezcal Mexican Grill LLC to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in two thousand twenty-four, meeting the two conditions noted.
I'll second it.
I have a quick question. Have we heard from My Mezcal about when they're going to be opening?
All that we know is that they're thinking and hoping that they'll be open sometime this spring, but we don't know anything for sure until they actually come and open. So, and that may or may not be with a liquor permit.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Jennifer Brown to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term to expire on February fifth, two thousand twenty-eight.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Jennifer Brown to the Local Development Finance Authority for a four-year term to expire on February fifth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. A couple of items on the manager's report this evening. First is a request to set our annual budget-related work sessions. Following what we have done in the last few years, we traditionally set two. And if we find that we need additional ones, then we set them as or when needed. So the first request would be to set a special meeting at four fifteen on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, with a second one on April first, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget work session dates and times presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Allenbos.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item on our agenda this evening is also one that everyone might be familiar with. We have to do this annually in regard to Public Act three ninety. This is the adoption of the hardship exemption policy. The recommendation this evening is to adopt the policy utilizing the two thousand twenty-three Health and Human Services Poverty Guideline, as well as a fifty thousand dollar asset guideline, which excludes the primary home.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the updated hardship poverty exemption policy utilizing the two thousand twenty-three Health and Human Services Poverty Guideline, as well as a fifty thousand dollar asset guideline excluding the primary home.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Allenbos.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the minutes and reports of boards and commissions that we do have in our packets this evening, we do have the minutes from the last Arts Council meeting and then also the Planning Commission meeting to review at our own time. We'll go ahead and open the floor for our second public comment this evening. Everything the same as the first.
Three minutes, huh? Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Don Koshmater, Cadillac, Michigan, I haven't been before you guys in a while. I feel the urgency to speak tonight, like I've spoken at other meetings, the county commission, warning that the World Economic Forum is planning for us all. They call it Agenda twenty thirty. And it's basically, there's eight billion people on the earth right now, and they're saying that's too many. So they're going to kill us all by twenty thirty in the next six years by one means or another. They want to maintain population levels at about five hundred million. Those that aren't killed are going to live in a coffin-sized apartment. You're going to eat bugs, you're going to own nothing and be happy and rent from BlackRock. I'm speaking to everybody. I'm talking to my gay people, my straight people, my Democrat friends, my Republican friends, all of us, my transgender people in the community, everybody. This is, this is something that we are all, we're all being attacked. We need to realize who the enemy is, Klaus Schwab, the World Economic Forum, Bill Gates, these people that are pushing these poison vaccines that are killing us with myocarditis and heart attacks and strokes and blood clots. Right here in our local bookstore, there's a copy of Alex Jones's new book, The Great Awakening, some solutions to offset their plans for us in the next six years. This is all legal and lawful methods peacefully. What they have planned for us, they just met last week in Davos, Switzerland again, and it's just horrible. It's just horrible. I would encourage you all to Google Agenda twenty thirty and find out what their plans are for us. They're going to take our cash possibly by September. Project Icebreaker was launched by the Bank for International Settlements last year in March. And no cash equals no Fourth Amendment, equals no freedom, equals no privacy. No cash is no good, so resist Project Icebreaker. I'm out bullhorning every chance I get, got a minute left. I'm out bullhorning in peacefully, legal and lawful areas, not in the city limits. I'm not trying to get in trouble. If I ever think I need to pull a permit, I'll pull a permit. I'm warning people that the COVID nineteen shots are poison. Nine eleven was an inside job. I'm warning people, the mainstream media is lying to you. Go to alternative medias like Infowars. Infowars is tomorrow's news today. You can get Infowars right on your Roku TV. You can livestream it over your phone, but please, you're all in very important positions and I respect you all and I think you're all doing a great job, but please be informed on which news you're getting your news from because their plan is evil and it's to kill us all in the next six years. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order, should anyone have anything?
Nothing?
Not a thing.
Oh, boy. Throwing it my way, huh?
Yeah.
Marcus, Marcus, I have a couple of questions. Is there any updates on the market doors, the garage doors? Any progress? Has there been anything, anything?
A lot of activity behind the scenes. Because it's a federal-funded grant that we received through the Community Development Block Grant Program, it requires a tremendous amount of, I'm just going to call it bureaucratic red tape, to occur first before we can even bring forward a request to hire a grant administrator. And so we have to go through a host of different sort of hoops just to be able to use our engineer even. It's a lot of, it's a lot of paperwork. So we're getting close.
We're hoping to find a grant to pay for it?
We got a grant, we did. We got, we got a grant, council provided the support necessary, so thank you. We wouldn't even been able to get out the door. We didn't have that. We received an eight hundred thou, I want to say it was an eight hundred thousand dollar grant, Owen, is that right?
I think it was seven fifty plus engineering plus environmental.
Plus our hundred thousand local match that, so around, it's a big, it's a big project. We got lots of money for it. And the construction timeframe for it will be somewhat limited because it's not like we're building, other than bathrooms, the doors themselves should be somewhat, knock on wood, simple to install.
So we were just, in other words, waiting through the paperwork?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything new on the short-term enforcement? Any, the short-term rental enforcement, is there any change? Or are we just, no news on that front?
No news at this point, no. I have not received a complaint in a very long time.
Okay. I would have to say I have one comment on that. I don't really like the idea of neighbors turning in neighbors.
Right.
Which we tell them we don't have.
I think everybody does.
Yeah. But that's unfortunate. That doesn't make good neighborhoods or a good city. But that's it. Thank you.
If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.